Monday, July 25th, and I call this meeting to order at 7:01. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, will you please call, roll call?
Councilmembers Leaks May, here. Martin.
Here.
Pollica.
Here.
Mayor Protem Piana.
Here.
And Mayor Coulter.
May I have an excused absence for our mayor?
I would move that we excuse Mayor Coulter's absence.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Mayor, our Mayor Dave Coulter is unavailable tonight. He sends his regrets, but he is off in Philadelphia, celebrating or gallivanting with the Democratic National Committee at their convention. Let's get down to approval of the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda?
Through the chair, I'd like to add County Commissioner Helene Zakas here under Presentations.
We will add her to Item A to start off. Commissioner Zak, you'll go first under our presentation. May I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Support. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Excellent. Well, let's get down to some business. Tonight on our presentations, we have quite a few tonight, but first, we're going to invite up our Oakland County Commissioner, Helene Zak. Come on down. Thanks for being with us here tonight. I know you've got some important things to announce, so, welcome.
So, I was, I serve on the Citizens Advisory Council for the Regional Transit Authority. And if you've been watching, if any of you read Cranes, there's been coverage that there was supposed to be a vote on the regional transit plan last Thursday, and it has been delayed until this Thursday. And Oakland County and Macomb County particularly have voiced some objections to the plan. I think it's a very fine plan, and the RTA is negotiating with the leaders from those two counties, and I hope that they can resolve those issues by tomorrow evening so that they can take a vote on Thursday to support the plan and put it before the voters in the November election. And they have to take action by August 16th to certify the ballot language, so we are in the nth hour. And, to be continued. I do want to let people know, there are concerns, it are my last Finance Committee, I serve on Finance. We have the Great Lakes Water Authority, and the Chair of the Great, each county has an appointee, as well as Detroit. And the Oakland County appointee is Bob Datto. He's one of Brooks Patterson's deputies. He is a very fine financial analyst accountant, you know, one of the best in the field. So, he gave us an update on the Great Lakes Water Authority, and there are many hot potatoes and concerns, you know, as they go forward. The first being that, you know, he's an accountant, there's no numbers, no past numbers in our city manager to judge anything on. And they've changed accounting systems and personnel systems from the Detroit water system. And so, it's hard to operate a fiscally sound organization without any past numbers. And, so, he has concerns about that. There are some, part of what we, you know, people complain about the costs. Right now, Flint is part of the water system again, so it spreads the administrative costs among more consumers and purchasers. It's good for all of us as in the system, but when they leave in about a year, then, you know, that administrative cost will be spread amongst fewer customers, translating into rate. Part of the deal that we accepted, you know, that we bargained, there is about a billion dollars' worth of debt in the Great Lakes Water Authority from some of the previous bonding, and so that translates into costs that we have. And there's still outstanding money that Highland Park owes. And Highland Park is, was deemed a suburban customer, as we are suburban customers, in the 90s. And presently, they are behind $30 million bill. They have not been able to bill for water bills since 2012, and they still don't have an ability to do that. And there's been negotiations, there's a lawsuit, you know, the judge found that he didn't, we don't want to make people, it's such a long period of time, we don't want to put all of those water bills onto their tax piece and push people out of their homes. You know, I don't wish for that. But they still haven't solved this problem. And again, we are ultimately responsible, as a suburban customer, for some of this reven, you know, lost revenue. So, to be continued. And then, one of the beauties, one of the positive things is, with the authority, they'll be able to refinance some of the debt at better rates, and that will be a favorable expense. But we're watching this very closely, and unfortunately, it does impact our water bills. I do want to let people know that there is a Senior Advisory Council for Oakland County, and each district appoints somebody to that council. And this council is advisory to our county exec, Brooks Patterson. They meet monthly at 1:00 PM, they study different issues, make recommendations. And unfortunately, my appointee had to resign due to health issues. So, I'm putting out a call to people, if anybody's interested in volunteering for this Citizens Advisory Council, I'd love to hear from you. And I'm going to let Jeannie know this, they meet Mondays at 1:00 PM, and you have to be able to drive to the county complexes where they meet. Last week, we had a budget presentation where Brooks Patterson and his team presented the budget. It is balanced for three years, looking ahead, couple of years. One of the bonuses that I discovered is the million-dollar local road money, the pilot, is actually in the budget for three years. So, our city manager and her team submitted a road project for Vester, and it's a rollover to use two years of funding, and there's actually two years of funding, three years of funding for this additional dollar. So, I was thrilled to learn that. I want to remind people that if you are in some committee, you're doing some healthy projects in the community, there is an opportunity to apply for mini grants up to $2,000. There's a Brooksy Way Marathon that's held in the fall, and this is in memorial of Brooks Patterson's son, who tragically died about half dozen years ago. And they do this annual run-walk in the fall that raises funds, and they've funded 24 health-related projects throughout Oakland County. And I do encourage Ferndale, be creative, apply for them, 2,000 mini grant can go a long way. So, it, you can find it by just going online, looking under Brooksy Way, really simple application. I also want to suggest our senior programs. I serve on the Area Agency on Aging 1B, and they have received a large grant from the Blue Cross Healthy Endowment Michigan Fund to fund some evidence-based education programs. And two of them, Matter of Balance, is helps people balance, and that's a great cause of falls, but they also have a wonderful diabetes education program. And they're having trouble using the funding from this grant. So, I do encourage, if there's any groups around here that want to host some diabetes education, you can either contact me, contact the Area Agency on Aging 1B directly to schedule this. It's a really, you know, it costs maybe $200 a participant, and there's like a minimal cost. It's really a wonderful program. And that's the second huge risk factor, and so that's why this group is there. So, that's it for this evening, and there are some county directories out there and hot off the press, and I welcome comments or questions.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next is the introduction of our Community Engagement Officer and new Police Sergeant. Chief, come on up.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. This evening, we're very excited to introduce our Community Engagement Sergeant and his replacement, which would be the person that would replace him in the new Patrol Sergeant. Last year during the budget hearings, Captain Pelazolo came up with the idea of a Community Engagements Officer. He floated that to the city manager, who floated it to the City Council, and during the budget hearings, it became the newest addition to the Police Department. Captain Pelazolo, who has all of the details on this, and these gentlemen will work for him directly, would like to come forward and give a few inspiring words, pin the badge on Sergeant Collette, and then tell you a little bit about the Community Engagement Officer and introduce him as well.
Captain?
We in law enforcement are living through a unique and trying times. Sometimes, it makes us wonder why we get up every day, why we put the uniform on, and why we run towards chaos when everybody else is running away. It's because we raise our right hand and swear to protect those that can't or won't, and to do it with integrity, professionalism, and honor. The two law enforcement professionals we're introducing tonight are not shying away from public scrutiny or increased threat, but rather have chose to walk headlong into it, and for that, we thank you. Jason Collette grew up in Clint Township, went to Chippewa Valley, graduated from Western University with a criminal degree in justice, attended Kalamazoo Police Academy, tested number one in our hiring, in our hiring process, and started with Ferndale PD July 30th of 2000. So, he's a few days shy of 16 years with the Police Department. Jason is currently married to his wife Lisa, and has two kids. Jason has held the position of Evidence Tech Field Training Officer, and is with the Oakland County Narcotics Enforcement Teams. He also spends a fair amount of his free time coaching baseball for his son. Jason, if you could come up, please? So, we've started a tradition that when we promote somebody, a person of their choosing gets to pin the badge on them. And Jason has asked me to do this, and I, and I do that with honor. Jason has worked for me on my platoon when I was a shift commander for many years, and it's an honor for me to do so. I also like to pass along a few words of encouragement to our newly promoted sergeants. You know, one thing about, that Jason brings, which is very unique, not only as a patrol officer, as a sergeant, but halfway through his career with us, he had a bout with cancer. He got treatment, he beat it, and I think it truly gives him a unique perspective and value on how fragile life is. So, I think he's able to bring that to his new position. You know, you're the same exact person you were before you got that badge pinned on you, before you got those stripes put on. The challenges are going to be a little bit more arduous, I should say. Respect is earned and not issued. That goes both ways, not only for the people that you work with, but the people that work for you. You're a police officer first, and a sergeant second. Never forget where you came from. You are, as a sergeant, you are on the front line of decision-making. You have boots on the ground, and you're there making those decisions where they need to be made, and that are most important, and that's directly on the street, in contact with the people that we come, that we deal with. Using common sense and empathy when dealing with people will guide you down the right path the majority of times. Supervisors know how to do things right, but leaders always do the right thing. And last of all, never lose your sense of humor. It will carry you through the low times and the high times, and I found that always helped for me. So, Jason, congratulations. So, now, if we can get Sergeant Brown up here. While he's making his way up, Sergeant Brown and I started together. He's a 21-year veteran of the Ferndale Police Department. A little tidbit, he was born and raised, went to school here. He has never collected a paycheck, a full-time paycheck, other than from the city of Ferndale. He worked at the DPW Yard, he made his way up through the Police Department. So, he is deeply rooted in this community. He's a graduate of Wayne State. He served as the Honor Guard Team Leader. He was the lead negotiator for our SWAT team. He handles all these really cool things, like Fleet Manager and Social Media Coordinator. He teaches at the Police Academy, and I think he, when this position became available, it was very clear to everybody in this room that had the power to make it happen, that this was our guy. And it's enough for me to quit talking about him. I would like to introduce to you Sergeant Brown, and let him give you a little perspective on this position in his own words.
21 years, so that means I need these. You know, I guess officially, I'm tasked with strengthening the already solid bonds that exist between our community and our Police Department. We're going to work on those by highlighting the six pillars that were emphasized in the Presidential Task Force on 21st Policing, which are building trust and legitimacy, policy and oversight, technology and social media, community policing and crime reduction, training and education, and officer wellness, and safety. In addition, so what that means is, what I'm going to do, every decision that is made, we're going to look through the lens of those six pillars and find out whether those missions are being fulfilled. I'll also be our new Public Information Officer. So, in plain language, what that means is, for those of us that are old enough to remember what it was like in Ferndale in the mid 90s and before, when all the police lived here, what did we know? We know who our police were. We knew their name because we lived every couple of blocks. I lived at Lewiston and Pinecrest. That was a time where, you know, you could, you knew the name of the cop that was driving down your street. And I think that brought people a little more comfort. We need to know our, we need to have our citizens know our police, and vice versa. So, part of my job is that relationship building. I think the focus of, of council, and the city manager, and the mayor, and the chief, is that at the end of this three-year experiment that we're doing, that it's successful, and that we don't have just one Community Engagement Officer, we have 41 Community Engagement Officers, because we're all going to be engaged in, in the full-time process of focusing on those six pillars. So, in the next 90 days, what can you look for from the Community Engagement Officer? I think I'm going to be fully immersed in our church visits. We have almost 30 churches in the city, and we need to reach out to each one of them, introduce ourselves, and get to know the leaders of those churches and the members of those churches. We're going to visit every business in the next 90 days. I'd like to have 25% of our downtown business visits done, where we're going to provide them some crime prevention, crime awareness, information, and just kind of get to know them as well. In the month of October, we're going to have a Citizens Police Academy, so obviously, in the next 90 days, we have to get that program planned, we have to get the attendees selected and vetted, so that we're ready to go come the first week of October for that program. You know, we're going to try and engage more with our students in non-law enforcement-related contacts. So, we're going to put together a few programs where we're going to welcome kids back to school on the first day of school, and we're just going to give them high fives as they come into the building, stuff like that. We're going to have the, the school district select one kid every month, and we're going to pick that kid up, and we're going to drive him to work in a police car. We're going to make a big deal out of him. I'm going to be working hard to expand and, and enhance our social media program. I'm going to complete a civil mediation training, where if you and your neighbor just can't get along over a privacy fence, and the police don't have a dog in the fight, we're going to sit down, and we're going to have formalized mediation, and we're going to try and come to a resolution. We have some bigger plans for that, but we're going to keep those under wraps for now. Obviously, I'm going to try and be comfortable as the Public Information Officer. I don't foresee that being a problem, but somebody holding a camera six inches from your face does introduce another aspect to talking that a lot of us aren't used to. And then, first and foremost, once again, I'm going to hit on it, we're going to have a clear understanding of our trajectory and mission as it relates to those six pillars, highlighted in the final report on the President's Task Force on 21st Policing. We really think that a lot of that information that came out of that report is useful, and is going to turn back the hands of time and allow our citizens, you guys, to get reacquainted with us, as opposed to just seeing a red, white, and blue car with a officer, you know, driving down the street and that. So, I'm excited, I'm looking forward to it. My number's out there, if you need it, just call the desk, and I'm sure they'd be more than happy to give you my direct number, so that they don't have to direct, transfer you to me, and anything you need. If you need the police, call the police. If you need to speak to me for anything else, feel free to give me a call.
Thank you. Next up is the Ferndale Community Foundation, and Councilman Martin?
Is that a question? We're going to do this over here, because we're going to give some money away. My name is Dan Martin, and one of the other hats I wear is I'm Chairperson of the Ferndale Community Foundation. And if you're unaware of the Ferndale Community Foundation, this is a group of volunteers that raises money through the year to give out to area nonprofits through a micro grant program. And we've been very blessed to be able to partner with some great nonprofits across the city, just as we are this evening. Among the other activities besides raising money, Ferndale Pride is a contracted event through the Community Foundation, so we're engaged at, at many, many levels. So, what I'd like to do today is introduce the micro grant recipients for this year, and then I'd like to pay some recognition to our board members of the Community Foundation. And we'll start with a new recipient this year, the Dale's Neighborhood Group. If you guys want to come on up? And they were awarded $1,000 for neighborhood activities, including a Halloween event, party, and summer play activities as well. So, come on up, up here, we're going to get a picture. Next, I'll go down to the end, and we'll get a group one again. Next is Fern Care. Fern Care applied for a grant and received money for a program that will add radiology services to their offerings for the uninsured or underinsured. Is anyone from Fern Care here? See, I gave them their check early, and they didn't show up. Next is, I think, one of everybody's favorite new, new groups, the Community Concert Band. Sharon, come on down. And the Community Concert Band has been awarded $1,500 to buy music. Okay. All right, I'll take it. Thank you. Oh, go down there, this way, to your left. We're going to do a group picture at the end of it. Next, Ferndale Youth Assistance, and we partnered with Youth Assistance for many years to do a program that, a series of educational programs, actually that addresses the whole family on serious issues such as bullying, substance abuse, and, and they bring in professional presenters. And former Mayor Craig Covey and County Commissioner is here, is now Treasurer, but for many, many years, Chairperson of Youth Assistance, to receive their check. Thank you. Welcome. Very good. Next, does anyone hear from Zion Lutheran? I wasn't sure if they were going to make it tonight, but Zion Lutheran is going to get $1,500 for their, they've got a really successful food pantry program that helps area residents in need of food services, so we'll make sure they get this. But if you know anyone there, thank them for that ministry, it's, it's very important to our community. And then, last but not least, we've got the Arts and Culture Commission. Come on up. And this $1,200 is to go to public art in the form of a mural that is, at least, as I recall, partially designed by students with professional arts, artists helping, so. Thank you. Great. So, those are the six organizations that we have funded so far this year. We do give out grants, and by way of proceeds, from Pride Festival and, and other things as well, but this is this year's micro grant. So, bear with us, we want to get a group picture with the recipients and our board members. I want to introduce our co-chair, Judy Palmer. Come on up. Oh, come on up, get your picture taken, Judy. Greg Pollica, sorry, our Treasurer. Jeannie Davis is already up here as a board member, Sharon Page is a board member. And the ones who couldn't attend tonight is Totally, I'm sorry, Totally, Ash Kanazi, David Holloman, Helen Weber, and Dave Coulter. So, let's bear with us one more minute to get our shot. We're, oh, there he is. We'll get a group shot. We'll get a group shot.
We go into the middle, we like to bring everything up. And try to do two rows.
Up in the middle, up here. This is like my groundies. Get in the circle.
All right.
And we'll continue to update you the activities of the Community Foundation throughout the year. Thank you. Back to you, Mayor Protem.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is the July Beautification Awards. Come on up, Robin.
Good afternoon, council, or what's left of you.
I think you need to wait.
Wow.
We need three here. What happened?
I wasn't responsible for them.
They slipped their bells off.
Calling council members.
Was it something I said?
This is unusual. Are they there?
The chief is going to get them. Arrest them.
Well.
Well, thank you for waiting.
No problem.
a homeowner in those four quadrants that has shown a wonderful beautification of their property. We also will do a commercial property as well. This particular month, the July awards, we are pleased to announce that the first home being recognized is in the northeast quadrant is Rodney Harris Jr. in the audience. Rodney is the owner of this property at two seven four East Drayton. It was built in nineteen thirty-six and it's a three-bedroom colonial. It features a beautiful, even though you really can't see it from the coloring, but if you go on our Facebook page, you can see a lovely copy of the photo there, a beautiful red Japanese maple in the front of the tree. It's clean and orderly landscape works well with the colors of the home. It is what we call a zero lawn landscape in that there's no grass in it. It's a lot of textures from plant material and mulch and it very, plays very well with this home. The next house, this one is in the southwest quadrant of Ferndale, is Carolyn Pernal here. Hi Carolyn, stand up, honey. How long have you owned the house? Two thousand nine. Have you done a lot of changes to it or just maintained the existing landscape?
I've done a lot of changes.
Oh, how wonderful. Well, that would explain some things.
When I moved in, there was nothing there, so...
Well, then you have made some changes.
Everything there is like rejects for a whole job, so...
Well, come on up because we have a certificate for you. This house was built in nineteen fifty-four. It is a three-bedroom. It's considered a ranch-style home. We thought that the lovely lush landscape of hydrangea, smoked bush, and other materials really plays well with the soft green coloring of the home. And for that, we would like to thank you for doing a lovely job. The next house is in the northwest quadrant of Ferndale, is Belle Martin in the audience? Okay. Six eighteen West Maplehurst. It was built in nineteen twenty-four. It's a three-bedroom home and it also is what we call a zero lawn landscape. There's no grass to mow. A wonderful collection of daylilies that are blooming right now, irises that bloomed earlier, and sedum that will be blooming later in the fall. Low-maintenance plants. It's mulch very nicely, provides an interesting landscape that requires no mowing and very minimal watering and maintenance. The arch and the armillary that you really can't see in that photo provide a nice touch and it works very well with the look of the house. The next home. In just looking at it, you're probably going, wow, there's not much there. But, is Jay Jensen here? There you go. Come on up, Jay. This little house, it's actually a three-bedroom bungalow built in nineteen forty-one. It received more nominations than anybody else in our month of nominations this time. It appears that your neighbors love you. And I'm just going to read some of the quotes that they gave us. "The man has lived there for only four years and completely transformed the house. I lived in this house," this is another person, "nearly fifty years ago and did not even recognize it. Jay has only been in the house for four years and transformed it into a beauty. Beautifully manicured yard, both front and back, and kudos to the new owner." First of all, the colors of the house are so classic, green and cream, they look exceptional on the nineteen forties home. The bushes are trimmed neatly. It's always upkept. The neighbors don't even really get to see the backyard of the house much, but it is also very well maintained and if you're going down the alley, it appears people have been looking in your backyard. And I understand that there's some apple trees there in the backyard that have been there for a while and they think it would be a great place for hammocks, so. "The lawn is always cut precisely and he's always making new improvements." So there you go, Jay. Everyone loves what you've done with the house. For the month of July, we have one award that we only give away one time a year and it is the Cone Flower Award. For those of you who may not know this, the Cone Flower is our official flower for the city of Ferndale. We, as a commission, like to recognize a home or a business that features the flower prominently in its landscape. The winner this year is five twenty-one St. Louis Street. And is John Monahan in the audience? There you go, John. Come on up. This particular house was built in nineteen seventeen, so it's the oldest one of the homes receiving an award this particular month. It's a lovely two-bedroom bungalow and it surely features our beautiful cone flower right there in the front yard, along with a lot of other very pretty blooming perennials. So, good job, John. Any comments? How long have you lived there?
I've been there about five years and the reason I don't have zero maintenance issues is I never leave some grass in my dog. You can clear the backyard and in the next five years, you'll turn into a dog park.
Awesome. Very, very cool. Well, just keep in mind, we do have a beautiful dog park here in Ferndale too, so if you do decide to get rid of the lawn, the dog's still got someplace to go, all right? The next award goes to the commercial property that has brought beauty to our town. And in this particular case, we are highlighting Pops for Italian at two eighty west Nine Mile. For those of you who haven't eaten there yet, please go. It is awesome. Is the owner or anyone from Pops Italian here with us? Well, for those of you who don't know, it's Brian Kramer is the owner of this property. They've done a wonderful job of including their outdoor patio area there, using the potato vine and other materials in the landscape in front of their restaurant. And we just thought it was a wonderful addition to the Nine Mile corridor down through there. So, awesome. Finally, in going back to what I had mentioned earlier, August nominations are due by August eighteenth. Thank you. You may drop these nominations off at the places that you see there on the screen. And then upcoming, we will have Block Awards for August. I mean, we will have the beautification award for August. We will have the Block Awards in September. And then in October, the Bootification Awards. And again, in December, the Holiday Lights. And then one final note, for those of you who may have been in the community for quite a while, in the past, we've had some historic, shall we say, opportunities with a couple of our commissions and various organizations all working together. And I'd like to point out that we now officially have ten very active members on our commission. We would love to have more representation from the city for anyone who is interested in coming from those offices. But we are also forging ahead in working with our arts and cultural folks, with Jeannie Davis being at our meeting this past week. We think we've got some wonderful things coming up with them. And then also on our commission, for the first time in quite a while, we have the president of the Ferndale Garden Club sitting on the commission. So we're all trying to work together and play nicely in the sandbox that we call Ferndale and I think the community is going to be very much better for it. So, thank you.
Thank you very much, Robin. Thank you for your commitment to the commission and all the volunteers. Our commissions are powered by volunteers, so we appreciate you and thank you. Next up on the agenda is the Ferndale Public Schools. Does anybody hear from the schools? Seeing no one, we're going to move on to the Ferndale Area District Library Presentation. Joining us is our executive director, Jessica Kaiser, outgoing executive director. Thank you for joining us.
Thank you. I'm not done yet.
I know.
Just a couple of things. I wanted to remind everybody that the library does have a millage proposal on the ballot next week, August second, so I encourage everyone to vote. And just a plug for the schools, they also have a sinking fund on the ballot as well, so we have some important local issues. Other happenings at the library include our summer reading program, which is in full swing now. And even with, we had an emergency closure last week, but that didn't stop us from keeping our summer reading excitement going. We just moved it to the Vester Street Real Movie, Get Real Movie thing. So we were very grateful to the DDA for partnering with us at the last minute and providing a venue. And the library is back up and running now. And finally, I wanted to plug our friends group, Southern Suare, which is a fundraiser, I'm sorry, it's not a fundraiser, it's a party, happening this weekend, July thirtieth, in the library courtyard. It is going to be a southern-themed party to show our appreciation for all of our friends. Admission is free, but you have to be a member to come, so you can purchase a membership at the gate. It will be Saturday, July thirtieth, from seven to ten PM. We have some wonderful sponsors, including Candlewick Shop, Houz Bayou, Trader Joe's, Western Market, and we just received a donation from Whole Foods Market as well. So there's going to be some delicious food, drinks from Valentine Vodka, and I believe Lagunitas Beer as well. So we hope to have a great turnout and a good time.
Thank you, Jessica. Next is the presentation from the Downtown Development Authority, Barry Hicks, our executive director. Thank you.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor Protem and city council members. First of all, I wanted to say thanks to everybody. I see a few familiar faces around that came out to our last Get Real Movie event. That was held last week on Thursday. We played the classic, The Sandlot, a modern classic, I'm not sure if that's what it's considered. And anyway, we have a few more of those coming up throughout the summer. On Thursday, August eighteenth, in celebrating with the theme of the Dream Cruise coming up that weekend, we will be playing Disney's Cars on Vester Street. And then also, on Thursday, September fifteenth, we will play The Princess Bride to round out the season. And then, in keeping in that third Thursday tradition, on October twentieth, we will have Fight Out Does Ferndale, the annual event, coming back around again. But before we get too far, I just wanted to thank some of our sponsors for helping us out. Without them, it wouldn't be possible for us to buy the rights and show these movies for free to members of the community, so we're very appreciative of them. And our sponsors are, this year, Embrew, Ferndale Collision, Painting with a Twist, Jim Schaefer and Associate Realtors, and the Candlewick Shop. So thank you to all of them for participating. Also, you may have noticed, there's some new developments happening around downtown. Right now, you've heard a little bit about it, I'm sure it's come before council before in the planning commission, but you'll see some of the demolition and construction happening on the corner of Planavon and Nine Mile. There are two different activities going on there. The Ferndale House Lofts, which is to be a ninety-unit, or ninety residential units and approximately ten thousand or so, give or take, in office space. And then also, the Shiford Park redesign reconstruction has been going on as well. There's been a little bit of input that's come from a lot of different places. And this is also a good time, I'd like to break and thank, thank a lot of our volunteers at the DDA. Since I've been here now, not quite a year yet, but getting pretty close, I've noticed we not only have great volunteers that serve on our board, but also we have a lot of committees that go a little bit under the radar and a lot of volunteers that serve on those committees doing different design work downtown, as well as doing promotions and things like the movies I just talked about. So I just wanted to stop for a second to thank them. And the reason I'm taking this moment to do it is because I started talking about Shiford Park. I know our design committee has kind of taken a look at that and come up with some ideas and provided input, I know, to the city's consultants that have come up with a new design that we're going to see incorporated with that as well. But, yeah, I just wanted to stop and say thank you to all of our volunteers that helped make those things possible. Also expect probably by October, November, a recap on the DDA strategic plan. We're looking, taking into consideration everything that came out of the city council's strategic planning sessions, the DDA planning sessions, also talking about some retention visits and retail attraction strategies. So those types of things are starting to come together now, seeing how all that lines up with a lot of the other plans that have been put together over the course of the last year and taking all of that into consideration as we head into our next round of strategic planning. So that is all I have for you right now. Thank you.
Thank you for all your work at the DDA. Moving on our agenda, we're moving into a public hearing. We have a special land use application for two three two five oh Woodward Avenue. And introducing this item is our city planner, Justin Lyons.
Good evening. So, as discussed at a recent planning commission meeting, the applicant is here tonight requesting special land use approval for two three two five oh Woodward Avenue. The current, former, or the current auto repair shop has been closed for quite some time and the applicant's hoping to reuse that as a quick-to-serve Mediterranean restaurant. As included in your packet, there was a floor plan included that showed customers would order at service food counter with some limited seating on the interior. And then the special land use application is specifically for some seasonal outdoor seating that would be at the front of the property and as part of the renovation of the existing building. Last, or excuse me, at the May eighteenth planning commission meeting, as part of the special land use requirements, a public hearing was held. The planning commission recommended approval of the special land use application and the revised site plan. As part of that discussion, as through the, as part of the public hearing, neighbors had came and spoke with some concerns regarding parking, hours of operation, waste receptacles, and a few other items. And so the planning commission took those thoughts into their, into their recommendation for approval, provided some conditions. Since that time...
And introducing this item is our city planner, Justin Lyons.
Good evening. So, as discussed at a recent Planning Commission meeting, the applicant is here tonight requesting special land use approval for 23250 Woodward Avenue. The current, former, or the current auto repair shop has been closed for quite some time, and the applicant's hoping to reuse that as a quick-to-serve Mediterranean restaurant. As included in your packet, there was a floor plan included that showed customers would order at service food counter with some limited seating on the interior. And then the special land use application is specifically for some seasonal outdoor seating that would be at the front of the property and as part of the renovation of the existing building. Last, or excuse me, at the May 18th Planning Commission meeting, as part of the special land use requirements, a public hearing was held. The Planning Commission recommended approval of the special land use application and the revised site plan. As part of that discussion, as through the, as part of the public hearing, neighbors had came and spoke with some concerns regarding parking, hours of operation, waste receptacles, and a few other items. So the Planning Commission took those thoughts into their, into their recommendation for approval, provided some conditions. Since that time, the applicant's worked with staff to provide some more clarity around the waste receptacle and secured a, is in the process of securing a shared parking agreement with New York Bagel for some employee parking. The plan was deficient by one space based on how the ordinance is listed for carryout seating, or carryout restaurants. And so the applicant is finalizing that agreement, and so that would be a recommendation as a condition should council want to move forward this evening. A little more detail on the seasonal outdoor seating area. It's at the front of the property, facing Woodward, formerly where cars would come, pull in and park, and there's a few curb cuts there. And instead, the applicant's proposing to improve that area with six picnic tables, decorative fencing around there that would continue around the back of the building, and then also some greenery to beautify, probably similar to what was just seen for the Pops Italian improvements. Other things to note, amplified noise is prohibited outside of the CBD. This property is in the C2 Zone District, and the applicant has no plans for outdoor seating, or outdoor speakers in the seating area. Furthermore, some other revisions that were included were, or conditions. Planning Commission asked that we look into some of the empty tree grates that are in front of the building as well. And actually, right at the same time, M.D.P.W. worked together to fill those tree grates with some trees as well. Aside from that, I'm here to answer any questions you have, pre or post the public hearing.
Excellent. Thank you for the introduction. I'm going to open the public hearing now for public comment. Is there anybody who would like to come up and speak to this item on the agenda? Please, please come on up to- Yes. Oh, no, please welcome. If it's on this item for the public hearing, oh, okay. Please come up to the microphone and state your name and your address for record. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Bill Ruskowski. I reside at 148 East Maplehurst. I'm a 37-year resident at that address. I live two house, the second house from the alley that butts this establishment. And I brought a little prop tonight, it's a no parking sign. On our side, on the south side of Maplehurst, there's no parking. And I had to make these up to kind of remind people that park there on the weekend that it's not, not legal. Not to be a pest or anything, but just to gently remind. And then the police have done their job, our magnificent police department, and issued some tickets and things like that. Our concern, again, is parking. Where's, where are all these patrons to this, you know, carryout place going to park? And I know the last, I was here at the last meeting and they had indicated there was space at the back of the establishment. And prior to that, the car repair place, it was a place for car vehicle storage. So the entrance was off the alley, so storage, there wasn't a lot of in-and-out traffic. And now you're going to, you know, they're proposing to change it into a parking lot. So there's going to be cars in and out via the alley. And then on the street, there's virtually no parking. There's a couple more spaces and out front, they were talking about the curb cuts and things. So we've got, you know, a concern about that. And the other thing, I'm not sure, something that wasn't brought up before, since that's a service facility, a vehicle service facility, is there any concerns about contamination of the ground, the soil? And that's, that's all I've got at this point, just wanted to voice our concern. So thank you very much.
Good evening. I'm Diane Wheeler. I live at 217 East Maplehurst, just down the road a little bit from the proposed location. Like Mr. Ruskowski, I'm very concerned about the parking, the added traffic on our street. The, although they have trash receptacles that they're supposed to be putting on this outdoor seating, we all have been at restaurants when people get up from the table and they walk away, leaving their carryout containers sitting there to be blown down the block to mess up our street. I've lived on that block for almost 40 years now. And yes, there is trash that blows down the block from Woodward, but nothing like if we have a restaurant there that's going to have outdoor seating. I have spoken to the gentleman from New York Bagel. His concerns about shared parking is with limitations after 6 o'clock. It's our understanding, this restaurant wants to open up at 10 a.m. So where are her, are his patrons going to park legally between 10 a.m. and 6 p.m. when the bagel shop closes? Last time I talked to Mr. Goldsmith from the New York Bagel Shop, he had not agreed to anything. They had talked, he had not agreed to anything yet. I think we need reassurances. I think we need some kind of traffic study on our street. We have people that have small children. We've already had a little boy killed on our block because of traffic. We don't want to see that happen again. So all of these issues are grave concern to those of us that have lived there for years, pay taxes, and, and try to be a good community. The trees would be a nice touch, the greenery would be a nice touch, but it's not going to make our neighborhood any cleaner or any safer for those of us that live there 24/7. I hope you give this real serious consideration before you approve it.
Thank you, Mrs. Wheeler. Any other public comment at this time? Please.
My name's Phil Goldsmith. My address is 23316 Woodward. I own New York Bagel with my father. I'm just here to say, there's a proposed agreement, but there's been no dialogue since we provided to them maybe one month ago. And so, I mean, we're open to the feedback. We gave them our proposal on what the shared parking agreement would be. And I just want to put that on the record.
Thank you very much. If no more public comment, we're going to move on to questions from council. I will close the public hearing first. Closed. And now, moving on to council, with any questions?
I don't have a question, but as the representative on the Planning Commission, the shared parking agreement was a key piece in our discussion around the use of that property. So when we do take a look at this, I would add a formal condition on here that doesn't exist today, but we've done it in previous sites, that they proposed shared, I may be happy to make the most of it when the time comes, but the language we'd look for would be that the shared parking agreement that is executed would be filed with the city and the register at a deeds consistent with 22-223-F of the zoning ordinance. So I would like some assurances as well around the shared agreement, and so that's the language I would have there. So I don't have any questions, having sat through the Planning Commission, but I'll, I just wanted to throw that out there.
Staff would fully support that as well.
Are there any other questions from our council members?
What are the hours of operation? What are the proposed hours of operation?
Sure. The last time we spoke, lunch hours were included, and then closing, I think, between 10 and 11.
One of the residents brought up an issue of contamination of soil. Can you talk a little bit about that?
Sure. Based on the city records, I don't have any knowledge of underground storage tanks and things like that, but it was clearly communicated to the applicant that, you know, Oakland County is, is their health commission, they, you know, approve any restaurant in the city, whether large or small. And so, you know, they would not be able to open doors until Oakland County were to approve that, and that would be part of their review.
And just to follow up with another comment, can you talk a little bit about parking on one side of the street?
Sure. And the resident who spoke is absolutely correct. On the south side of East Maplehurst, there is not permitted parking as of today, but-
And why is that? Is that just-
I think it's just historically been that way. I'm not, I'm not quite sure. Fire route. And so, at, at this, based on discussions with DPW and fire department and police department, potentially, there would be a possibility to add two spaces on, next to the restaurant on the south side. And that's what's shown in the plans as they exist now. That was proposed as part of the future resurfacing of East Maplehurst, and would include closing of that curb cut. That, that would have to be still finalized and signed off by all agreed parties, but that is the initial, initial plan right now. So those would be, that would be two additional on-street spaces for, not, not just for the restaurant, but for any, anyone on the street.
Is the applicant here?
Yes.
Is the applicant here? I just had some questions for them.
Okay, my name is Fred Betty, and my wife is Yvette Betty, and-
How come?
We are, she will be running the business as a manager and cook.
My question is that something came up regarding the trash debris. So will you address how that will be handled for the resident that was concerned regarding that?
Yeah, see, the, I don't have, I don't have a site. So where the seating area is on Woodward, and not the whole front of the building would be seating. It's fenced, like, almost half of it is fenced off, so people will be sitting inside. And even if they leave the trash there, it's not going to go to the street. So it will be, I mean, if, you know, they leave the trash there, it will be, it will stay enclosed in that area, so. So, I mean, there will be a trash can there, but if they decide to throw it, I mean, I don't know.
But you'll have workers to maintain the-
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Have a question through the chair. The, it appears in the, in front of the building, there's a driveway which was probably accessed the garage bays. Being that they're no longer going to be used in that manner, is it possible to redesign that frontage to allow for at least one, possibly two additional parking spaces?
We talked a little bit about that. We talked about parking quite a bit at the Planning Commission meeting. And the applicant did not prefer to have parking right next to the outdoor seating. It seemed, it was kind of safety concern from the Planning Commission as well to add parking there.
I didn't mean, I meant on the street.
Oh, okay.
There's a bay, there's a parking bay-
That, that, okay.
-that is intersected by this driveway, which if it was closed off, you would just extend that parking bay.
Got it. Yes. So that was also discussed, and I'm working with M.D. to see if that is a possibility or not. There was some concern internally there on adding more on-street parking on Woodward, just, just because of how much traffic is there. But that, that's something that we can explore for sure, and had some initial contact with M.D. about.
I can't believe one parking space is going to affect Woodward's traffic that much.
There were some safety concerns internally on, on just putting a, putting a driver in that situation, but-
Thank you.
So if there's no more questions from council, we need to entertain a motion.
Sure. I would move that city council approve the special land use request for 23250 Woodward Avenue, Sidwell number 242527329001, to permit outdoor seating with the following findings and conditions as listed in the packet, with the addition of condition two, that the proposed shared parking agreement that is executed to be filed with the city and the register of deeds consistent with section 22-223-F of the zoning ordinance.
Support.
Moved by Councilman Martin and supported by Council Leaks May. Any other comments?
Marty, may we have a vote?
Councilmembers Martin?
Yes.
Holika?
Yes.
Leaks May?
Yes.
And Mayor Pro Tem, Tiana?
Yes. And this motion passes. Next on the agenda is a call to the audience. We have a half hour dedicated to call to the audience, and we ask folks to come on up and have three minutes to say what's on their mind. Can I go ahead? Welcome.
Thanks. Crystal Praxmeyer, I'm the editor and publisher of the Oakland County 115. A few years ago, there was a community volunteer named Dennis Hepner who passed away. He had a tradition of coming to city council meetings before elections to remind people to get out and vote. Now, I know that everybody that's watching this meeting is probably very likely to vote. So I've picked up the tradition where Dennis left off, but I tried to think of ways that we can help to increase voter turnout, not just among the people that already vote, but beyond that. Voter turnout is very low. So my suggestion this year is, you know, right now, there's a lot of discussion about the national presidential election. But if you look online, there's not a lot of discussion about local political offices, and those are the offices that really affect what happens in our day-to-day lives. And so I would like to encourage people to discuss those races. Even if you know who you're voting for, talk to other people about what these positions are and why people should be informed about them and having these conversations. And the other thing that I want to bring up is that there's so much really heated discussion around the presidential election, that I'd like to encourage people to try and be nicer as they're having these kinds of conversations. There's really three kinds of people out there at this point. There's people who are going to vote for Republicans, people who are going to vote for Democrats, and people who aren't going to vote at all. And being one of those people that used to be very cynical about voting, that discourse turns people away from voting. So if you're one of those people, consider trying to be welcoming to others and encouraging them to vote, not with yelling and extreme signs, but try and really let people know why that's important. And all of the people that are here and watching the meeting understand that probably better than a lot of people. So it's really up to all of you to go out and have those conversations. And of course, if you need nonpartisan political information, the Oakland County 115 website has candidate interviews from people from both parties throughout the county, where people can just see who's running and get information in an unbiased and non-dramatic way. So it's oc115.com is that website. And just go out and vote. Thanks.
Thank you, Crystal. Mr. Covey?
Hey, good evening. Thanks. My name is Craig Covey. I live on West Breckenridge. And I have two items, two events I'd like to promote tonight, if I may. The first is Last Call, the 20th Annual Ferndale Pub Crawl. This is an event that we began, that we started in 1997. About 35 of us went pub crawling. There were only six bars in Ferndale at that time, if you can think of that. This year, again, it's the 20th anniversary. We have 13 clubs. Sponsors include Clean Planet Foods, Rosie O'Grady's, Tito's Vodka, One-Eyed Betties, Between the Lions, Como's, a lot of other clubs. It's 21 and over only. We traditionally have a couple city council members and/or the mayor there. Mayor Geddard started the process back in the 90s. So Mayor Pro Tem, we'd love to have you there to send off some of the groups. No motorized vehicles are permitted, it's all walking. And we're calling it Last Call. It could be that some folks take over next year and create or continue the event, but Monica and I, who- Monica and I, who've sort of organized this for 20 years, are going to call Last Call for ourselves. You want to leave, you know, still being able to walk and stuff like that. So, that's the Pub Crawl, but if I may also real quick, mention the annual Green Cruise. So, we all know the Dream Cruise is coming up, but the 12th Annual Sierra Club Green Cruise is coming up on Saturday, August 13th. It's one week prior to the Dream Cruise. It's sort of an alternative to the Dream Cruise. Again, like the Pub Crawl, there's no motor vehicles permitted. There won't be any bars involved with the Green Cruise, but it's a family event, human-powered transit. We encourage people to walk, bicycle, take the bus. There's all sorts of neat contraptions that people do. They roller skate and roller blade and all the various things. I believe Mayor Proton Piana is leading, or one of the bike rides, or you're speaking at one of the bike rides. Involved in this Green Cruise are three different bicycle rides, one of which is 40 Miles. Pollocka, I assume you're not going on the 40 Mile bike ride?
You never know. I do.
One new thing we're doing this year is Reverend Shofalls, who is the pastor at the Ferndale United Methodist Church, is going to have a blessing of the bikes before they all go, you know, riding down Woodward Avenue, which is probably a good idea. At 1:00, we have the annual green celebration parade. All kinds of folks come to that. We carry the earth with us. And new this year also, we have Miss Earth Michigan coming. So, this is like a Miss America or Miss Michigan, only representing the earth. And she's actually participating in the nationals. She wants to become Miss USA Earth, and then there will be a Miss, oh, probably Earth Earth, but really neat lady, very, very pretty young woman is coming, and she's one of our leaders. And then, Mr., sorry, Water Commissioner Nash is going to be our other parade marshal for the event. So, again, that is the 12th Annual Sierra Club Green Cruise, coming up on Saturday, August 13th, starts in downtown Ferndale on the east side. One of the neat things, too, we're doing this year, Detroit Bikes donated an $800 bicycle that we're going to raffle off. So, see it the Pub Cruise and see it the Green Cruise, the Pub Crawl, Green Crawl, whatever it is. All right?
Thank you.
Thanks, councilmen, members.
Hi.
Hi.
I'm Mary Lou West. I live at 455 Academy Street. Your favorite topic, rats. When I'm out in my backyard at 6:00 in the evening and a rat goes running down the fence, there's a real problem in the city? I grew up here. I don't ever remember this being a problem as a child. After 35 years, I bring my mom back to move into our family home, and I can't even take my daycare kids for a walk without seeing dead rats on the sidewalk. It's now becoming a health issue. What's going to happen when one of these kids fall on a dead rat? I'm out in my backyard, I'm attacked with flea bites. I don't own an animal. Rats carry fleas, diseases. It's become a safety issue. What kind of help can we get from the city? I walk with the daycare kids, I see the city's trash containers filled with garbage that aren't being emptied.
Right. Thank you. The city is aware of some rat problems. I encourage you to leave your name with our DPW director, Lloyd Kiraton, and he will connect with you and work with you on your particular issue on your property.
Okay. There's even, like, the houses with the weeds. I can't, the house, it's not a house anymore, the vacant lot, it used to be 462 Ardmore. Up against the fence, they have black tarp with wood on top. When I'm out in my backyard cleaning, I can see just a line of burrows. I'm not crazy about setting rat traps and catching a dead rat. I guess I got to put on the big girl panties, and I'm going to have to deal with it.
Well, the city has a partnership with our homeowners. There are things homeowners can do to help mitigate the rat problem, and again, if you give your name and number to our DPW director, they will work with you to address this problem. Thank you for coming tonight and sharing.
I have another concern. What precautions, if any, are going to be taken when you tear, when Wilson School is torn down? I'm sure the rats are just going to come running. Are there going to be precautions that are going to be taken before the school's torn down?
We will work with the school district on this issue, and...
Yep. We actually have a policy where we are requiring baiting and trapping prior to any demolition within buildings within the city, so they will have to follow suit with that as well.
And I would also like to thank the police department. I lived in a neighborhood city for 12 years, did home daycare, always saw the police. Not once did a police car stop. Every time I'm out with the daycare and we see a police officer, if they're not getting out of the car, passing out stickers, churning out the lights, showing, I just, I can't thank the police department enough for letting the children know that we're here, that they are friends. So, thank you, Mr. Collins.
Thank you. Thank you, Mary Lou.
Hi. Sharon Chess, Earl Boulevard. I have two things to talk about. One is I see that there's a great opportunity here within our city, with all the new developing going on with new structures, the consideration of building two new parking structures. And I like when you're talking about these, if you take into consideration building green space and entertainment space, perhaps on top of the roofs in these garages, where pop-up bands could show up, where movies could be played, where more socialization from our community members have another place to meet, other than just on a park bench in front of a bar or a restaurant on downtown Ferndale, where the traffic is so loud, it's hard to have a quiet conversation with a friend. Also, when bringing in new structures, with all the mural painting and the art exhibits that we're currently doing and receiving grants for, I'd like to see our murals become a bit more articulate with who we are as a community. I take great pride in knowing that we were once, mode of transportation was an electric streetcar, and now we've moved all the way up where we have electric plug-ins for cars. We are a diverse community with, one of the most giving communities, with 30 churches and about 100 different nonprofits here. There's so much that can be expressed in a mural, other than just caricatures, and it seems to falsify actually who we are. When I look, I just came back from a trip with my grandchild from Philadelphia, and I see the murals, they are depicting history. There's so much growth in history here in Ferndale. I want to start targeting the art program towards that type of expression. And then, to our police department, I'm a cop's daughter. My dad was on the police force in Garden City in the 50s, back when you had to be a fireman and a police officer. He definitely wore multiple hats. At 85 years old, he's still referred to as chief. So, as a safety officer, it's not what they do, it is who they are. And their families have a very unique family life, knowing that their loved ones every day are putting their lives on the line, and that their job takes precedent, unfortunately, over their family. And over the last events, it bothered me, and I didn't know what else I could do, so of course, Facebook is your answer to all social media. And I put out my feelings, and I wanted the police department to know that the majority of members here in the community, and I guess that would be those who are not criminals, 100% are behind our police department and our fire department. And you should go on the Ferndale forum and read some of the wonderful comments that were made. Thank you.
Thank you, Sharon. Is there anybody else who wishes to come on up? There's someone behind you. Thank you. Hi. Good evening.
Hi. Good evening. I'm Krista Johnston, and I'm here as a representative of the Pig and Whiskey Festival last weekend, and unknowingly, I'm echoing the last two speakers as well. The city is always so great to work with, with the events, all departments that we work with, Michael and Cindy, to make sure that all these special events go well, but I just wanted to take a moment and give proper thanks, especially to the Ferndale Police and Fire Departments. This is my 14th festival that I've co-produced in Ferndale with Pig and Whiskeys and the DIY Street Fairs, and I just want to make sure that everybody knows, at least my experience is, it is an absolute pleasure to work with the Ferndale Police Department and the Fire Department. These officers and firefighters are just wonderful individuals. The day before the festival, as we all know, there was an attack in France with, where a large truck plowed through a crowd, and so I started the morning of the festival quite worried. And before I could even address those concerns, Captain Palazzolo called me up, my cell phone, and told me what they were doing to address the concerns about the safety of the situation in light of the attack, to ensure that a similar one would not happen in Ferndale for this event. And I have to say that people noticed. The fairgoers felt safe. They saw the trucks put as barricades that no one was going to be coming through, so it really created that sense of comfort and peace. It was a very peaceful event, but I just want to say, there's just so many stories about the police and fire department as individuals going out of their way to be friendly to guests. They were engaging with children and the families, and they were providing assistance where we needed it. They truly want the event to be successful, and they go above and beyond to make sure our community is safe. The officers and firefighters are proactive, they're communicative, they're professional, and they are all-around wonderful people, and I am very grateful for our incredible police and fire department, and I feel very lucky and proud to live and work in a city and a community that is served by these amazing men and women. So, thank you all so much.
Thank you very much.
Just wanted to remind everybody that the Ferndale Dream Cruise will be on August 18, 19, and 20, and for any information you want to know about all the different fun activities that will be happening, go on our website at Ferndaldreamcruise.com, and you'll get all the information you really need to know about all the excitement that's going to take place. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome. Thank you.
Hello. I'm John Monahan from 521 St. Louis, and I just wanted to comment on, I think, the previous homeowner who's left regarding the rats. Back when I first moved here, I think Myers started construction shortly after that, and we ended up at Fielding in St. Louis with a big rat infestation. I think they all just went mobile. And I worked with some of the city inspectors and stuff, and pointed out lots that needed to be cleaned up. Basically, what I'm trying to say is sometimes we have to be proactive, and the inspectors worked real well with neighbors to clean up debris in the lots and things like that. And I personally started setting out a lot of poison. And I made all the poison inaccessible to cats and dogs. It was something that only rats, and you can see rat tracks and find them. If you're proactive, you can do some things, and the city did everything they needed to do, so I think it's a problem that'll get taken care of.
Thank you. Any other comments for this evening? Bless you. All right. Moving on to the consent agenda. The consent agenda is approved in one motion by the council body, and I am going to read the items on the agenda for approval. Consent agenda, A, approval of the minutes of the regular meeting held July 11, 2006, as submitted by city clerk. Item B, approval of special events permit for 2016 DIY Street Fair to be held on September 16, 17, and 18, 2006, as detailed in council action summary, to reflect the consensus of the special event committee and contingent upon the listed conditions submitted by the Director of Special Events, and authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign the temporary license agreement as submitted by the Director of Special Events and Projects. C, approval of the special events permit for the 2016 Camp Vestor to be held on August 19 and 20 of 2006, as detailed in the council action summary, to reflect the consensus of the special event committee and contingent upon the listed conditions as submitted by the Director of Special Events and Projects. Item D, approval of ordinance number 1187, amending Chapter 2, Administration, Article 1, and General Section 2.5, background checks as submitted by city attorney. Item E, approval of earnest money deposit escrow agreement as part of the sale of the vacant property on Hilton Road near East Marshall Street, City Parcel 242534278056, and to authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute the escrow agreement as submitted by city planner. Item F, approval to purchase 12 first responder vests from Combat Sport Supply for a total amount of $3,800 from Drug Fortune account number 265000977, as submitted by the Chief of Police. Item G, approval to backfill custodian position due to resignation of a current employee as submitted by Director of Human Resources. Item H, approval of the allied proposals in the amount of $19,700 to replace existing doors to City Hall lower-level council chambers, and that the DPW director be authorized to sign the proposal. The total expense would be charged to general fund, facilities maintenance, the appropriate account number, as submitted by Director of Special Events and Projects. Item I, approval of allied proposal in the amount of $3,530 to construct a storage closet under the north stairway in City Hall lower level, and that the DPW director be authorized to sign the proposal. The total expense would be charged to general fund, public service capital outlay, to the appropriate account number, as submitted by the Director of Special Events and Projects. Item J, approval of the speed bumps proposal in the amount of $7,351.01 at a quantity of 50 water barriers, and that the DPW director be authorized to sign the proposal. The total expense would be charged to general fund, special events Dream Cruise, appropriate account number, as submitted by the Director of Special Events and Projects. And item K, approval of the bills and payrolls as submitted by the city manager's office, subject to review by the council finance committee. What is the will of the council? I need a motion.
Can we have questions first?
Oh, sure. Yes, that's correct. Do you have questions about any items?
I have a question about 7G, the backfill custodian position. I'm curious why we have positions brought to council when it's filling an existing position, and there's no change in anything other than just the individual?
It's my understanding there was a resolution passed quite some time ago that required anytime any position is filled for any reason, it needs to come before city council approval.
If I may through the chair, it's also a financial control. It gives us the opportunity to make adjustments if we need to on its personnel expense while the position's vacant. Otherwise, they would slip by.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions on the items?
Would this be an appropriate time for maybe Attorney Chris to explain the amendment to item 7D?
On the background checks. This is, at the last city council meeting, we talked about ban the box. Can you talk a little bit about this?
I can. Would you like me to do it at this point?
Sure.
Thank you through the chair. This is a proposed ordinance amendment to modify the city of Ferndale's background check ordinance, to make that ordinance provision consistent with the resolution that council passed two meetings ago, which eliminated, the resolution eliminated background checks prior to a conditional offer of employment being made to a prospective employee. And the proposed ordinance before you this evening does provide that background checks, and more particularly, criminal background checks may be done, but not until such time as a conditional offer of employment is made to such prospective employee. So, that's the context of the proposed amendment before you, to make it consistent with council's previous resolution.
And just as a reminder, this policy change was proposed by Councilwoman Leaks May, and we appreciate your leadership on this policy initiative.
And just one further point... And just one further point, that resolution provided that its effective date was going to be August 1st. And that's why this ordinance is coming here for you, for your consideration this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Chris. Any other questions at this point? If not, may we entertain a motion?
I move that we accept the consent agenda as presented.
Support.
And our Madam Clerk, can you call the roll?
Councilmembers Pollocka?
Yes.
Leaks May?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
And Mayor Portampianna?
Yes. Next up on the regular agenda is a consideration of institutions for religious worship ordinance amendment. And up again, presenting is our City Planner, Justin Lyons.
So, as we've talked about a lot this year, we're in the master land use plan process. So, along with the plan, usually comes a few ordinance amendments. So, this is the first of probably more to come, just bringing the city's ordinance up to date with all the things that are happening and new in Ferndale. So, we reviewed a request for a proposed institution of religious worship, and we're looking at the ordinance. There are some specific regulations specific for religious worship institutions, and noticed that there was a minimum lot area, minimum lot size requirement in the regulations. So, following the process to amend ordinances, there was a public hearing held at the Planning Commission recently to discuss that, potentially removing that minimum lot area requirement. As you well know, institutions of religious worship are special land uses. So, staff in the Planning Commission felt that those requirements allow for enough, you know, evaluation of each individual project should a new institution come forward with an application. And in actually reviewing the number of existing facilities in the city right now, very few of them would be able to meet the minimum two acres if required, just the nature of the sizes of properties in Ferndale. But the only other use that has a regulation related to minimum lot area in the city's ordinance is with vehicle storage facilities. So, I think we'll probably keep that for the time being. But, but as I said, Planning Commission held a public hearing at the June meeting, and unanimously recommended approval of the text amendment. I don't know if Councilwoman Martin has any other feedback on?
No, I just, this is an antiquated ordinance. I don't, I'm not even sure the original reason why you think you need two acres to open a church, other than for parking potentially.
Right.
But it's, it's not necessary. So, our recommendation is we can just clean it up.
Well, I believe that they probably instituted it so that every house on every major thoroughfare all of a sudden couldn't become a church, and therefore become tax exempt.
But they still require special?
By loosening the restrictions, you're opening up more properties for the potential?
Correct. But they would, through the chair, all still require special land use.
Absolutely.
So, there's a policy still in place to?
Requires two acres.
Requires two acres, yes.
So, we'd like to remove the two acre requirement.
And I think you brought up a point, but I'm interested in most from a historical perspective. Do you know when this ordinance was last updated? It might have been when it was actually written.
That's my thought, actually. I looked it up at one point.
Yeah, I don't have that offhand.
I think it's original.
But yeah. It seemed, the date was a while ago. I can't remember offhand.
If there's any more, no more questions, we need a motion?
Sure. I would like to move that we approve the adoption of ordinance 1188, amending Section 24-148 to the Ferndale Zoning Ordinance, Ordinance Number 1087.
Support.
Any other questions or comments? I had a brief comment, is that as the city goes through the master land use plan update, and the Planning Commission is looking at a lot of our ordinances, I think we're just going to see a lot of small tweaks happen over the next year as they, as you guys go through that process. And so, I appreciate your due diligence.
I actually do have a question. What warranted bringing this up in the first place? There's a lot of ordinances out there that just kind of sit around for decades without anybody saying boo about them, till someone looks at it and says, "Well, that's odd."
Sure. Yeah, there was a specific proposal that went before the Planning Commission last month, this month, at the July meeting, for a proposed institution of religious worship.
If I may through the chair, is the Jewish Community Center on Pinecrest? This came up, to take a look at it.
Okay. So, this alteration is going to allow them the opportunity to?
No, because again through the chair, and correct me if I'm wrong, Justin, but they're not going to have worship services at the community center. The function's differently. That's not going to be a synagogue.
Right.
However, the ordinance got brought up to take a look at in conjunction with that. This won't make a difference if the community center goes in or not there.
Right.
But it just happens to, as part of that discussion, we looked at the ordinance and said, "Ooh, look at this."
So, if you bought the property next door, you could turn that into?
You'd have to go through the whole process for synagogue, but yeah.
And the property next door would not lend itself to that. But, but yes. It's kind of a unique property, and that proposal will be before council later this month.
And just to reiterate, if anything else came to the Planning Commission, there's regulations in place to review this at a case-by-case basis.
Correct.
And through the chair, actually council, since it's a special land use, it would actually come to council as well.
So, two gateways.
Exactly.
And there is a motion on the table, and supported by Councilwoman Leaks May. Marty, may we have the vote?
Councilmembers Leaks May?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Pollocka?
Yes.
And Mayor Portampianna?
Yes. Next on the regular agenda, Item B is consideration to approve the fiscal year 2017 fee schedule. And introducing this item is?
Me.
Our City Manager, April Lynch.
As you know, every year, as part of the budget process, we amend and adjust our fee schedule as necessary. We had very few changes this year as well. So, I'm not sure if you want me to, I can't really highlight 50 pages worth, but if there's any specific questions, I can. You've got them highlighted.
Okay. All right. Bring it on.
Oh, you want me to, seriously? All right.
No.
We're sure. Licensing for an intact dog goes from $10 to $15. There aren't that many.
Oh, you want me to highlight? Oh, I get what you're saying. I thought you had questions.
Page four.
On page five, council meeting agenda subscription, free online services goes down, actually, from $20 to $12. See, there's no?
You want to get them by pages? Because I have a couple of early pages too.
Page 15, the administration fee per permit under the Plumbing, Community, and Economic Development went down from $35 to $25. On page 23, I couldn't tell if this was a new fee or a variation. Construction parking application fee is $10 per parking use fee per day, and same-day request additional fee space of $15. There's no 16 rate loaded, but there's a 17 rate.
Right. That is new. It's to address dumpsters taking up parking spaces.
And then in addition, on page 26, the dog park memberships are there, which didn't exist in '16. $40 for the annual membership, $10 for the key fob, and the replacement key fob of $10.
Do you have any questions? Sorry, I thought you meant, you wanted me to go through page by page. So, thank you for doing that.
Sure.
You ready?
Sure. Bring it on.
Okay. Page three and page five, we have notary services that are duplicated. I'm not sure why.
I might actually be able to shed light on that. One is probably through the clerk's office, and the other one may be through the police department.
Well, one says general, the first one just says general fees. And then the one on page three just says it's under licenses and permits.
Probably through the clerk's department.
Okay. I mean, there's no change in the fees. It's just, it's the same information on two different pages.
We'll double-check on that and delete if we can.
Okay. Page 21, I noticed that there's absolutely no difference between ambulance services for non-residents or residents. So, I'm not sure why we have two different rates if they're actually all the same.
Could I, if I may through the chair, can speak from a fee schedule perspective?
That's something any particular contracting service or anyone in that industry would look for specified?
Page 29, under Special Events, Class III barricade usage fee and water barrier usage fee, neither of those were in 2016, but they are in 2017. Assuming that's brand new, but I don't understand why.
The water barrier is new. So, the water barriers will be, is a newer addition to the fee schedule, is you just, we just approved the purchase of them just a few minutes ago. So, this will be brand new, and that will be determined by the amount of attendees anticipated in the event. And then what was your second question, and what page is it?
Well, it was the one right above it, which is just a Class III barricade usage. So, I'm not sure what's the difference between?
If I may through the chair, I think you mean the dumpster rolloff fee wasn't there in '16, and is now there in '17.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah. There's no lines that cross here. The dumpster rolloff fee, yeah. Did you copy that? Did you comment on that earlier?
I missed it, actually. So, I'm glad you brought it up.
I don't see Michael here, so I'd have to get clarification on what that is, is really, so special. Is he there? Oh, he was way back there.
Talking about the dumpster? During certain special events, such as like the DIY and the Pig and Whiskey, they request an extra dumpster for their recycling. And so, there's a, there's a pretty much a standard fee for that from the service provider. So, it's a pass-through.
Okay.
So, we just charge the event for the fee that the DPW gets charged. And that's the standard fee.
Thank you. Page 30, copies of water bills, they used to be $5, now they're no charge.
We didn't feel it was necessary.
I'm fine with that. I just, I wanted to bring it up. And recreation, the fitness center fees are all lower. And I thought there was conversation that the recreation?
Should be eliminated.
The fitness center was actually being eliminated.
Yes. They'll need to be removed.
Okay.
So, we'll make that adjustment.
Good catch.
Guys, do read our stuff. Thank you.
I appreciate everybody's attention to detail here. We take our fee schedule very seriously, make sure that we're not overcharging our residents for services performed. But I also want to call attention to the eliminated items. There is a page of fees that the city is eliminating.
Oh, actually, that is page 31.
That is page 31. And so, that's the fitness center fees that they're eliminating. The business pass is also the monthly rate as related to the fitness center.
Correct. So, all that on page 31, yes, is eliminated fees, not, so it was eliminated. If you look at the header.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't see the header. Thought that was continuation. That makes sense.
May I ask, what's probably a really more distracting question through the chair? Police Department picture comma per item, is that the mugshot? You had a $3 fee for pictures in the police department? Was that the mugshot?
That's a request for photographs, yes.
Oh, so not, we don't charge the arrestees for the mugshot?
No, we don't. We didn't do that.
No, I'm good. I'm just surprised by it, is all. And really, $3? That's, I can do my senior pictures here.
I'm just glad to see the compact disc item is being removed. Hi. Welcome to the 80s. All right. If there are no more questions, we get a motion.
I move that we accept the fee schedule as presented.
Support.
Marty, roll call, please.
Councilmembers Martin?
Yes.
Pollocka?
Yes.
Leaks May?
Yes.
And Mayor Portampianna?
Yes. Next on the regular agenda is the consideration of the Lennox Water Main Linings. And introducing this item is our DPW Director, Mr. Lloyd Kurten.
Thank you, Mayor Portam, and Council. The water main on Lennox between Morehouse and Bahad has been experiencing a number of water main breaks. In fact, three in January alone of this year. The water main went into service in the 1920s, and it has reached its end of life. And so, as part of our normal capital improvement process, and it's approved to budget, we're recommending replacement of the water main. In fact, we're really recommending lining of the water main instead of full replacement, because this will be the first water main in the city. We, although we've lined a lot of sewer main and had great success with it, probably half of the city's sewer mains have been lined. The water main, this is the first time that we've attempted to line a water main. It's commonly done, but it is a specialized process. And this particular stretch of water main is ideal in that we don't believe there's any service lines connected to it. So, it brings the cost way down. It's, so water, you know, water main lining is lower cost, it's less disruptive, it's a faster process, and it also helps protect trees and landscaping, as opposed to open trench, you know, cutting the site and destroying a lot of above-ground infrastructure and landscape. The low bidder was Liquor Force, and the unit price is quoted for this particular job was actually a public bid with Southfield, that they currently have a contract that was in 2011. As council is aware, the economy's changed quite a bit since then, and for the better, thankfully. But what's happened is the contractor is willing to extend those unit prices to us. And, you know, just to verify that, we are getting a good deal. We did look at 2011, and in 2014, I believe it was, the bid tabulation is in your packet, and it shows that there's considerable savings for the city by accepting those unit prices. So, my recommendation is council approve the water main lining.
Thank you for that presentation.
If I may through the chair, Lloyd, what's the lifespan of this work?
It's equivalent to replacement of pipe. So, a good another 75 years.
I'm kind of amazed that the technology is that good, that it repairs the pipe for that long. I don't necessarily understand it, but?
This is going to be typical. In other areas, it might not be recommended, but this is a perfect opportunity for us to try this new process because of the fact that no service lines are connected. And so, you know, you'll still see some potholes in areas where there's tees, but overall, it's much less disruptive.
And again through the chair, if I may, the expense will be charged to the Water and Sewer Fund Capital Account. What's the current balance of that? I figured you had a way.
So, for 17, we're budgeting $5.6.
So, this will take up about 60% of that budget.
And Lloyd, what type of service disruptions have residents and businesses experienced along here?
It's going to be minimal because of the fact that it is a looped system, and it is a much quicker process. I mean, certainly, there may be times where we have to shut off the water, but it shouldn't disrupt businesses because of the ideal condition of this particular section of pipe.
And I'm also curious, if I may, why the vendor was willing to extend pricing that was five years old, six years old, from the city of Southfield? I don't really necessarily understand that.
No. The, you know, I believe the incentive is that, as I said, other communities are beginning to adopt this technology. This was a regular, you know, planned replacement. But what happens is, as I said, this is the first time we've used this, and so I think they're anxious to, you know, do a pilot program and show us. I'm not sure we'll be that fortunate next time.
Okay. And what is their? And what is their change order? If there is additional costs added on, if they do come at us as a change order, since they are the low bidder, they could potentially come back at us for more money. Just want to make sure.
We will have on full-time inspection and so any conditions that would come up that weren't included in the bid proposal would be evaluated on an ongoing process. It's not likely. I believe this is a fairly straightforward project.
The contract, the chair, is for the, is for the work. So if they go outside of that, we're capped at this. And then if they say, oh, it costs more, well, too bad, you take a loss on the work then. I mean, because this is what your contractor did.
Fixed price. It's a fixed price contract. Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Anybody else like to make a motion?
Yeah. I thought I had it. I move to approve the Liquor Force proposal of $384,250 to perform the water line, I'm sorry, water main lining along Lennox and Morehouse north of the 10-mile service drive and that the DPW director be authorized to execute the contract contingent upon city attorney approval of the contract documents, bonds, and insurance. The expense would be charged to Water and Sewer Fund capital account number 592-000-977. Support.
Excellent. Roll call please.
Councilmember Holika?
Yes.
Leaks May?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
And Mayor Protem Piana?
Yes.
Thank you, council.
And for the final item on our regular agenda, item D, reconsideration of the 2016 Medical Marijuana Operation and Oversight Grant Subrecipient Agreement between Oakland County and the city of Ferndale. City council reviewed this item at the last city council meeting and approved unanimously to move forward with the grant agreement. Since then, more questions have come forward and city council asked to put this back on the agenda to receive more information about this grant opportunity. Introducing it is our chief. Thanks.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Clarification was asked of the origin of these funds. 2008, the voters passed the Michigan Medical Marijuana Act that was codified into Michigan compiled laws 333, 26426. And the part that is relevant here is Section 6L, which mandated that the funds that are collected from medical marijuana patients, caregivers, renewals, and doctor fees are administered by the Department of Licensing and Regulation. Those fees are to be used for the administration of the Michigan Medical Marijuana Act. That's where the origin of these funds come from. The sheriff's department, those funds by LARA are now being administered by them in grant form. They go to different counties for enforcement, education, and communication of the Michigan Medical Marijuana Act. That the sheriff's department last year in December requested a grant for specific purposes to mostly to investigate the Michigan medical marijuana growing situations that occur. They will look into medical marijuana grows, those that are legal. They've found numerous that are legal, those are left alone. They've found several that are close to being legal, those they are advised through education and assistance. Those are also left alone, but they're given a period of time to correct deficiencies. And then we have the ones that they have to enforce, which are those that are operating outside of the act that don't have the associated patient caregiver's relationship. And those ones are the ones that have to be enforced. Sheriff's department was given a grant that has been awarded. Each of the communities that have an officer on the net team were given the opportunity to work on these type of cases and as a vehicle for the sheriff's department, the county, to rebate those overtime costs that the cities incur. We became, they requested we become a pass-through grantee, sub-grantee to the county so those funds can come back to the city to reimburse for the investigative services for this particular function.
Thank you for the introduction. I know that we have some questions from the public tonight. I was going to open that up to the public if they had any questions that they'd like to ask or make a comment. Please keep your comments to three minutes, please.
Thank you, Mayor Protem, Piana, and I appreciate very much the city council reconsidering this issue tonight. I had asked or hoped that that would happen. The grant that the sheriff of Oakland County wrote and got from Lara, which is the state of Michigan, was for $326,000. So in that grant, and you all should have gotten a copy of the grant that the sheriff and the county wrote to the state, it lists where those funds are going and what they're being used for. The state legislature, in the legislation that regulates medical marijuana, asks that those funds be used for education, sure enforcement, but also in the sense of helping people understand how to legally use the Medical Marijuana Act. I just, I want to remind folks of what the sheriff and his net team did here in Ferndale seven years ago. I think councilwoman Piana's the only one who was on the council at that time, although our city attorney will remember. But that's when, after we spent about a year going through the zoning rules and going through the planning commission and working with the attorneys, opened up a dispensary here in Ferndale on Hilton Road. And it was the net organization, the sheriff's net officers, who didn't come to Ferndale to educate clinical relief, but they came to Ferndale and raided clinical relief with guns drawn and dogs snarling and helicopters overhead. These funds come from patients and I want people to understand that. When someone has a prescription from their doctor and they are legally allowed to use medical marijuana, they pay a fee to the state of Michigan, $100 a year. So the money that is now coming back to Oakland County is from medical marijuana patients, people who have cancer, people who have glaucoma and other issues that they are legally allowed to use this medication. But let me tell you what's in the grant that the sheriff has written. It is for sting operations. There are vehicles used for undercover work. There's a van that is used to transport plants that are taken from caregivers. There's a whole section of purchasing evidence bags that they use to transport and bag the plants. By the way, in the year 2015, the sheriff's department absconded with one ton of marijuana in Oakland County. They have funds for bulletproof vests in order to close down compassion clinics. I just, again, want to ask people to think about the idea that how much education is the sheriff's office planning to do with bulletproof vests, evidence bags, and undercover vehicles? The people at Ferndale four times in the last eight years have voted to decriminalize marijuana, legalize marijuana, legalize medical marijuana, and open dispensaries. Overwhelmingly, the voters have said that. And yet, we are participating. If we take this grant, we are buying into that grant from the sheriff that is going to close down dispensaries, arrest people like they did Barbara Agro, a 65-year-old woman who was the receptionist at Clinical Relief seven years ago. We ought to ask, we ought to demand that the sheriff not use our own net officer to go after medical marijuana patients and caregivers. We ought to consider pulling out of net if they're not willing to do that. But at the very least, we ought to take a stand and say, keep the $5,000. We don't want to be a part of that particular grant. So thank you very much for listening.
I think most of you know me. My name is Deborah Young, 440 West Troy. I've been involved with the legalization movement for three or four years now. I'm a board member of MI Legalize, which is the group that is bringing forth the statewide recreational legalization. And I want to speak on this, and I want to speak to you not as a board member of MI Legalize, not as a marijuana activist, but as a medical marijuana patient. And my experience and the folks that I know around the state whose cities have accepted these grants, this has really turned into a harassment of patients, of sick people. People are being raided. They go into your property without search warrants. They confiscate personal property, medicine, nobody gets charged, and yet everything is gone. I don't understand, and maybe the chief of police could explain this to me, I know the mayor's not here, why would we need a medical marijuana operation oversight grant in Ferndale? We have no open dispensaries. I know that we've issued license, but nobody's opened. We have one dispensary that's operating three hours a week only because they have 15 patients, that's all that requires. There doesn't seem to be a problem. If there's a problem, come to the voters and say, we have a problem with marijuana in Ferndale. There is not a problem with marijuana in Ferndale. There's no reason for the police department to have extra funding. Anything that is going on with marijuana right now should fall under regular police work. I don't understand why we need vehicles, why we need vests. Didn't I read something in the agenda that we're already buying vests? Why would we even be a part of something to harass sick people? Thank you.
How's work? You guys all right? How's work? My name's Charmy Golson. I'm the founder of Michigan Moms United. And I travel the state a great deal. I've been to a lot of city council meetings and I'm really enjoying this, I got to say, because you guys have a great deal of pride in where you live. There's a great deal of support for law enforcement here, for community policing, which is essential for healing. So I mean that when I say, how's work? You guys, you guys are doing a good job. I want to thank you. I was asked to come and present here by several Ferndale residents. My father was a Washington County deputy sheriff when I was a little girl and a career law enforcer, a career, rather, military man. He retired from the Navy, a master chief. And I'm incredibly proud to come from a law enforcement military family and I'm a lifelong resident of Michigan. I believe it was Sharon earlier that said, those that are not criminals support law enforcement. And that's why I'm here today because I wish that were true. I really do. But nothing's further from the truth and it's really the reason I'm standing here today. We need community policing and we need to be honest about how the drug war has transformed the criminal justice system. So I'm also a former staff writer for LEAP Law Enforcement Against Prohibition. And those are judges and prosecutors and jailers who work to end the failed drug war. And I say failed drug war because the drug war was supposed to do three things for us. It was supposed to save lives, slow the flow of drugs into society, and keep drugs out of our kids' hands. And I think we can all agree that that hasn't, those three benchmarks have not been met. So I'm a writer and I worked for LEAP. And so my job was just to interview the cops when they came in, they have a speakers bureau, interview the cops when they came in and find out what their deal is and write a profile of them and help them write op-eds. And I had no, I had no information about this at all. And so they taught me about being a judge and sending single mothers to prison for 35 years on the minimum sentencing requirement for taking a bag of coke across the street for their boyfriend and, you know, as a judge, doing that for 30 years like Judge Gray did in California. And I've also interviewed Michigan State Police higher up here. His name is, oh gosh, I'm so sorry, I'm going to forget it, Ted Nelson. He trained all the Michigan State Police guys on civil asset forfeiture reform. He's a new LEAP speaker here in Michigan. And he's really a very brave individual. I'm very honored to have been able to work with all of these law enforcers. I started interviewing women who had been raided by their local drug cops in 2010. And I'm going to be real honest with you, I didn't believe anything they told me. The first six or seven women that told me that the cops had come in, helicopter lands, you're trying to put your kids to bed, you've registered with the state. I've interviewed about 300 families who've registered with the state as medical marijuana patients and caregivers who have zero criminal intent and who've been subjected to swap raids, which investigate their compliance with the act instead of a knock and talk like they'll sometimes do in California. You know, you'll have a Black Hawk helicopter land in your yard and guys with guns and masks get out with, and with guns and threaten to shoot your dog. And I didn't believe these women for a long time. And now that I do, I travel the state and I organize them and I work with them and I try to find solutions. We have to, we have to resolve community relations between communities and police. We're seeing that in many areas. I want to make it very clear that I'm not anti-law enforcement and I pray every day for law enforcement safety. And now I pray every day for the safety of the people that register with the state and have no criminal intent so that they can use medical marijuana as well. So LEAP taught me, when I worked for them, they taught me that enforcing the failed drug laws decreases public safety. And after we passed the Medical Marijuana Act here in Michigan, I thought, well, this is drug policy reform, right? We reformed our drug policy here in Michigan. And I started looking at the crime statistics. Michigan does something very unique and we list all reported incidents of crime and then all reported arrests in those matters. And so the LEAP guys taught me that enforcing the failed drug war decreases public safety. So I started looking at our crime statistics. We make arrests in Michigan. These really don't change county to county or year to year and it's stunning to me. But we arrest criminal accusations of prostitution and Controlled Substance Act violations about 98 and 90% of the time respectively. And I started looking at that and wondering, what's going on here? And it's about forfeiture. It's about civil asset forfeiture. If they catch you with a prostitute, they can take your car. And of course, everybody knows about drugs. You know, they take everything, these raids that they, they take everything. So I've been really active in getting the civil asset forfeiture reform package pushed through in Michigan. Here are some of the other statistics. We have a 40% arrest rate for murder and a 15% arrest rate for rape. So this is a great place to live if you're a rapist, but not if you're a medical marijuana patient or caregiver. Because we also have a 40%, I'm sorry, 17% increase in arrests since 2008, when we overwhelmingly passed this law for marijuana possession only, a 17% increase in arrest rates. So we really have to ask ourselves, what's really going on here? It's not about public health and safety, I can tell you that. It's about money.
I just want to remind you and be mindful of your time.
Oh, I appreciate that so much. So Barb Agro was my first mom for Michigan Moms United. And she, her family was raided in 2010 in sweeps in Oakland County that the Oakland Narcotic Enforcement Team did of businesses and homes. And she's now a 75-year-old widow and a felon because Oakland County has pioneered these prosecutorial procedures to remove protections provided in the act. So she was working at the Clinical Relief Ferndale dispensary, the, I think her sons owned it, when they, when they came in and raided. And she was like, hey, we're legal, I've got plants at home. And they said, oh, really? So they went to her house, they got a warrant. Her husband Sal Agro was home. He had just gotten a phone call that they had raided her son's homes and taken piggy bank money and had guns to her grandchildren's heads. So Sal Agro got his keys, left his shoes and wallet, and got in his car and drove to his grandchildren's home. The Oakland net team arrived while he was gone. The door was unlocked, they destroyed the house. You can look it up, there's video from the Oakland County newspaper. They came through shortly after this and they documented the carnage. And he calls them jackbooted thugs and all this. And then he had a heart attack about a week later and died. So Barb Agro is not only a felon now, but she's a widow. And Jessica Cooper and the judge determined before jury selection that she was not eligible for the medical marijuana defense because her front door was unlocked and that's not an enclosed lock facility. This case has gone all the way to the Supreme Court and back because, and am I out of time? Completely out of time? I'm so sorry. I'm available afterwards for any questions that you may have. But it's critical that you understand that these funds are not going to go for policing for community safety. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Good evening, councilor. My name is Robert Redden. I live at 27724 Algealane at the Madison Heights. I've been a longtime resident in Ferndale a few times in my life. And the funds will not, also, I was the first medical marijuana patient to be raided in Michigan. And I think the council knows the point of the money. So I'd recommend not taking the money. It's not worth it. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Chad Morrow. I actually traveled all the way down here today from Gaylord, Michigan. And it's becoming quite a trend, to travel around the state of Michigan, like Charmy said, to address some of the situations going on in the state due to similar situations as this. Myself, I worked at ABC Warehouse for 12 years. I left ABC Warehouse after my grandfather died of cancer, and became involved in the medical marijuana movement. My current patient is six weeks in remission from brain cancer because I treated him with cannabis oil, which the Michigan State Legislature likes to play games and stuff, say may or may not be illegal or illegal. Long story short, though, what I heard earlier today was, really pay attention to your local elections and voting, not just the presidential one. Where I come from in Gaylord, we had a raid of eight stores. Afterwards, small town, we only needed 84 signatures signed for a petition to go to the ballot. We turned in over 700 signatures. Just crushed it. City put everything through, we have an ordinance that allows dispensaries. We have an ordinance that also allows cultivation facilities. We also have one that involves, that allows processing facilities. Six days after this took effect, I forget the name, she said the one is Down Here, Hunter, whatnot, but the similar one of Northern Michigan Straits here in Narcotics Enforcement, came in and took everything from me. And nine other people that I know up in Gaylord, Michigan. Now I'm currently facing felony charges, I'm on bond. Not a criminal, I was trying to help people. Going back to the civil asset forfeiture, I've had $60,000 worth of equipment taken from me between my car, my home that I was evicted from, my cultivation facility, my lights, my plants. But we're innocent until proven guilty. Again, like they said, it's all this money is gonna be used for, is for eradication, not education. Please, deny this money.
If there is no more public questions from the public, Chief, why don't you come back up, and if there's questions from Council?
Do we have to close the public hearing?
Oh, it wasn't public hearing, it was just public questions.
Oh, that's true, okay.
If I may, through the chair, how many hours of overtime does $5,582 buy?
I would have to do the math, but you can guess about $45 an hour, divided into 5,000.
And just to clarify, the work that the overtime is designated to go for from the grant is strictly for enforcement education of medical marijuana?
Yes. What this would be is, again, I understand the positions that are being espoused here, but remember, in order for this to work appropriately, the people that are not doing it right, we have to take action to make sure that the ones that are doing it right are left alone. And the ones that are doing it for criminal purposes are stopped. And those are the ones that these funds are being targeted for. There are people out there that are growing marijuana under the guise of medical marijuana, and have no intention, they have no connection to a caregiver in this state. In order to grow medical marijuana, you must be a licensed caregiver, and you must be associated with a patient. If you don't do it that way, then you are in violation, and you can only assume where that marijuana is going to, because there's no control over it. And that's the investigations that are being conducted.
And then a follow-up question, if I may, then. So are those investigations in the city of size of Ferndale not able to be done within our budget and requires overtime dollars?
These dollars that are being spent are county-wide.
Agreed, but this grant is for overtime of our Ferndale?
Our Ferndale officer is assigned to a county unit.
Correct.
They go county-wide. So when they do, if they could be in Waterford doing an investigation, and is designated as it meets the criteria of the grant, that money is, that we would pay overtime to, that money is rebated back to us through the grant.
So our police officer would go out to Waterford to support, is that what I'm understanding?
We do, he does today, I mean, as part of that.
That's what Net is, is that he's, wherever their investigations lead, could be in Ferndale, could be in, you know, any place that, within the county jurisdiction.
Okay, thank you.
I have a couple of questions, specific about the grant. Is this, are you aware if this was the first time that the sheriff has requested the money from the state?
My understanding is that late last year was the first time that the LARA had released these funds that have been collected since the inception of the act. So when the grant came out, the grant came out for counties only. The counties were the one that would receive the funds. And this is the county's sharing of those grants back to rebate the cities for expenses that have incurred for, and the confusion is that these are cases that occur in Ferndale. We've had very few, if any, since, for years now that we've had dispensary-type investigation in Ferndale. There've been a couple minor grows, but for the most part, these are out counting.
And if I may add to that, sorry, just related, it is true, isn't it, that we've limited the number of dispensaries we'll allow in the city because we want to evaluate the impact on law enforcement?
Yes, and we do not have dispensaries in Ferndale, dispensaries are legal. We have facilities in Ferndale, I know that's just like cutting hairs, but
Yeah, I know.
What the city has approved are the facilities, and those are very specific as to how those operate. We work very closely with the folks that are trying to open these up, so they follow all of the rules. And so far as we have seen, we've had great cooperation with the individuals attempting to open up, as well as the place on these nine that have.
No question, but as a matter of policies, we've limited the number in order to evaluate the impact on law enforcement long-term?
That's correct, and we have just begun that evaluation.
Who oversees the Net program?
Oakland County Sheriff's Department.
And if I may, just as a comment, we use Net services above and beyond just marijuana, medical marijuana oversight.
This is really a small part of what they do, maybe an important part of what they do, but they are involved in the heroin epidemic. We have very forefront of that particular problem right now, and they have been for some time. Council has heard over and over again about the different issues we've had with the motels and some of the other, they, the county and the Net Team have been a player in getting Narcan with all our officers, being trained. We just had our second saved this weekend with a Narcan. So they're very proactive in all aspects of methamphetamine, heroin, cocaine. This is really a small portion of what they do.
So that being said, why is it the state legislation that stops our ability to use these dollars for the cocaine or heroin epidemic, or for recovery services, or for real education?
That's correct, I don't think they, anybody, that's a bad thing. I mean, this is, the money was being collected specifically from the Michigan Medical Marijuana Patients and Caregivers, and they wanted to make sure that that money was used for enforcement, the education, and the communication of that particular thing. So these funds cannot be used for other investigations.
May I just add then a clarification question? We've already approved this, what is the action of Council tonight? I'm assuming one is nothing, two is to revoke the action we did at the last meeting? And so there's really no reapproval that we have to do, we need a revocation, is that correct? I just have one clear, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, that's a great question.
Let me just see how it is on the agenda.
I think the agenda language says to reconsider.
Well, I was gonna say, while you're still looking through that, just for clarity, the 5,000 that we're requesting, though, is strictly to cover overtime for our Net person?
That is the limit, what, or that is our section of it. What will happen is, is that if there is an investigation that meets the qualifications, that officer will submit with the hours and the information that it's connected to a medical marijuana case. And once he has been, we would be reimbursed for those hours. If that's, the amount, that it may not be $5,000, it'd be a reimbursement up to that dollar amount.
So in reality, by the end of the year, he could only use $250?
As possible.
Okay. What happens to the remaining?
The math.
It would be, it's a grant, it would survive past the fiscal year. Until that money is gone. About, just over one-third of that grant is for overtime reimbursement, about $164,000, or the 325 or something, that was, I have to look. But, so, a little bit more than one-third of that grant money is for overtime reimbursement. One is for, there are no surveillance vehicles, these are transportation vehicles, a trailer, $1,000 for specific bags for marijuana storage, because there's, it becomes very, if you store it, you can't put it in a paper bag, it becomes a problem. And the bulletproof vests are, and like I say, the question is, is that, or the enforcement is, is that we're looking at, are the big-time operations that are, have nothing to do with legitimate medical marijuana? And those ones, if they're being run by individuals that are of a nefarious type person, that puts our officers' lives in danger for having raid vests is one of the components of that grant as well. So it's an officer's safety issue as well. And just for a point of clarification, like was mentioned before, in California, many of the tips that are received are handled in the knock-and-announce format. They hear that a home is growing medical marijuana, the protocol is knock-and-announce, or knock-and-talk, rather, not knock-and-announce. Knock-and-talk, talk to the people, get compliance, let me see what you have. They let you in, if they don't, then they may have to get a search warrant, depends on the circumstances, if there's enough information. But they have found that most people are very proud of their medical marijuana growing, and that they are, if they're in compliance, they let the police in. And when they are, and many of them are, they are left alone. There is, it's sound very draconian up here from the other folks, but in reality, we know that this is here, it's here to stay. We have to live within the guidelines. We want to prevent the people that are doing it illegally, and may funnel some of this marijuana into the, into the community.
Any other questions?
I think, for our city attorney, we have clarification for the question I'd asked.
Okay, please.
Again, through the chair, Council did consider this in pass, I believe unanimously at the last meeting, this particular item. Your Council Rules of Procedure do provide that, should a member of Council who's in the moving side on the last meeting, with notice to the clerk, that they may wish to reconsider the issue, that issue is appropriate for consideration at the next meeting, which is today's meeting, as an item that can be deliberated by Council on a motion to reconsider the previous vote. So, should there not be a motion, you've already approved the item, should there be a motion to reconsider the prior vote, then Council, that would be an item that Council could take up.
So, I could say I move to reconsider, to reconsider the vote on this matter? What's the wording, what's the language?
Well, yeah, to reconsider the affirmative vote that was passed at the last Council meeting on this agenda item.
Before we move forward, I have more questions for the Chief.
Sorry.
I appreciate you following up with procedure here, as it's unusual. So, what I heard you say is that our police department is committed to investigating large-scale marijuana grows that are diverting to the illicit market. And I feel pretty confident that our police department is very aware of city council's position on medical marijuana in our community, and really is trying to balance the needs of our caregivers and patients in coordination with, in coordination with the law. So, I appreciate, I appreciate that. And of all the medical marijuana facilities that have come to the Planning Commission and to City Council for their special land use and approval by City Council, I feel pretty confident in saying that all of them are interested in making sure that the illicit marijuana market is dealt with as they are doing medical marijuana, and that they appreciated Ferndale's oversight in this matter. So those were sort of my general comments about
Are we doing comments now or questions?
Oh, I was doing comments. But my question really is, how many other cities are considering this grant? And is the grant for one year, and is it renewable on an annual basis because it's from the state-required law, and so the county has to apply every year, and so this is gonna come back to us every year?
Just as a point of clarification, this grant has always, already been awarded to the county. It is signed, sealed, and delivered, they have the money. So they will use that money until they have purchased the things that are
But it's a one-year grant? I mean, do you have to use the funds in a one-year period, from start to end of a grant date?
Well, I can find that out, but my guess would be, is that as long as there is money in that portion of the grant for overtime, that they would be, you would be able to draw upon that. I would guess that it would be expended within a year or so, but I would guess that that money is there until it is expended.
So if I can make a clarification, it's a partitioned grant. Certain percentages for capital expense, certain percentages for hourly salary or overtime.
Actually, specific numbers, Councilman. Particular dollar amounts for each one of those facets of the grant.
Okay. So capital expense could be, could be spent in the first six months, but the remaining funds that would go for hourly salaries or overtime would then go as far as, till the funds run out?
Correct.
And our request for 5,000 is strictly for the overtime. It is not for us to purchase any materials.
Can I be clarified off of that? This isn't our request, the county came to us and asked us, right? We didn't ask for this?
This is simply a vehicle, or a way for the city to recoup funds of overtime of our officers assigned to Net.
Yeah, we've already spent the money. We've already spent the time.
Some of it, yes, some of it has, but in order to get reimbursed for some of those hours, we would have to become a sub-grantee to an existing grant. That's already been awarded. The money, the grant has been awarded by the state to the county. This is the county giving us money back for our expenses.
And then, did you answer how many cities are already, how many cities are considering this grant?
There are 15 communities that have a officer assigned to the Narcotics Enforcement Team, county-wide.
So all of those cities are receiving grant monies?
All of those communities would be in the same position that we are to request to become a sub-grantee to the county.
And how many have already passed this?
I'm only aware that Royal Oak has. I have not even asked if any of the other ones have addressed this as a question. I do know that Royal Oak passed it two weeks ago.
What is the desire of Council?
I'll push, I'll put a motion on the table that we revoke our approval of the agenda item.
A second.
Now, I have a comment through the chair, several. I, here's my issue with this. I have, I have zero desire for us to be non-cooperative or to pull out of this county work with this, with the Net support. I like generally the work they do, from the perspective, I like participating in it. I would never, for us, not to participate in. I'm 110% supportive of law enforcement. My issue with this is that in a community that is overwhelmingly supportive of medical marijuana, and in a community that I represent, that is very supportive of law enforcement, but also has had kind of clear direction in this, and we've modified our policies to wait and see what those activities are, and what law enforcement requires of us to do to operate it within our city, I am willing to make an exception on this one provision. I wish, wish, wish this grant was set up, that it wasn't specifically directed at medical marijuana, then I probably wouldn't have an issue with it at all. Heroin, education, recovery, addiction are all issues that are killing us as a society. To target this money at medical marijuana seems misplaced to me. And I understand this is a symbolic stance, the county's gonna do what the county's gonna do, and it's nice of them to offer us money. But in this narrow, specific instance, my heart's telling me to say, "No, thanks."
If I can add on to your comments, Councilman, I agree with those. And I guess I have the concern, and I should have realized this two weeks ago, but, you know, in two I have the concern, and I should have realized this two weeks ago, but, you know, in 2013, the city legalized marijuana. You know, we are a community, even though legally we can't legalize marijuana, because the state will, will, will oppose that, the county opposes it, but our community as a whole has legalized it. To accept funds from, that are, are being used to, you know, sorry, I'm losing my train of thought, but to use funds that are being used to arrest people for something we considered legal, even though it may be in Clausen or Pontiac, you know, it's, it's still, I still have issue with that. I don't think I can support it now.
Are there any other comments? Well, if I may, I am inclined to continue on with my vote from two weeks ago, mostly because I believe that this, well, I've been supportive and have voted for all medical marijuana laws in Ferndale and at the state level. I feel like this grant is very specific, and the city has been using it for the illicit medical marijuana, and I think this is, you know, about taking what you had said, what did you say?
Shush, part of it.
A specific stand, and so.
Right.
I am inclined to maintain my vote from two weeks ago. With that in mind, I.
So to clarify, an affirmative vote, voting yes, is a vote to revoke our previous action.
Right. And a no vote is to continue on.
A no vote would be to continue on as we voted two weeks ago.
No is yes, yes is no.
Right.
May I just ask Chief one question that you said that caught me off guard, and that was, when you made announcement.
Can you please go to the microphone?
So everybody can hear.
You acknowledged a difference being a raid vest, and so my question to you, is that a safer vest than the current vest that we currently give to our police officers to be protected? And if so, is there a reason why we don't already outfit our officers in those vests?
Excellent question. A raid vest is rated for rifle rounds, the ones that the officers wear as a daily. They have, these will stop pistols, and they will not stop a rifle round, so raid vests typically are a higher level of protection. The reason that officers don't wear them on a daily basis is they are very, very heavy. They are not conducive to daily wear. Earlier in the, in the agenda, you would see that there were 12 raid vests or heavy-duty vests that were requested. Those will be under the current situation that we're experiencing with officers being ambushed. Those will be carried in the vehicles of the patrol cars. They will be readily available to the officers to use. Those are our patrol officers, and, but they are rifle-rated, and that is the difference between a raid vest and soft-body armor that all the officers wear.
If I may, through the chair, just on that question, though, this $5,000 is not for vests. It's for payroll for overtime. I'm not saying no to vests. I'm saying no to overtime pay. Okay, I want to make for the folks at home, though, who may get confused by this. We're not denying equipment to officers.
So with the motion and supported motion, I think we're ready for a vote.
Sure.
And just to reiterate, a, a no vote is.
Retaining the last action.
Is retaining the last action, and a yes vote is to reconsider.
Just to deny.
To revoke.
To revoke the grant.
Is to revoke the grant.
Okay. Thank you.
Just one more question before we.
One more question?
Just to Chief Collins. So Chief Collins, I just want to understand just how important is this grant to our, our police department? Because I just want, I understand all the arguments that have happened here and what's come from the audience, so I want to hear from you the importance of this grant, too.
In the grand scheme of things, the City Ferndale Police Department wants to be a team player with the Oakland County Sheriff's Department. We want to investigate these type of activities. As I've stated before, this is not stopping people from utilizing medical marijuana or growing medical marijuana as they do it correctly. This is to stop the people that are doing it incorrectly, or are actually growing marijuana under the guise of medical marijuana and putting it on the market, that then all control is lost, gets in the hands of either our youth. This is what we're trying to prevent. So as a symbolic thing, as a money thing, I am 100% in support of us utilizing this grant money.
But to clarify a previous statement, I'm sorry, through the chair, likeliness of this overtime being spent in the actual cities of Ferndale, and I know drugs know no boundaries, but as you mentioned, most of this activity or overtime wouldn't be within our city at all.
No, we would, we would be paying for it, though. It would be.
Sure, I understand that. Yeah.
So you're paying for it regardless?
Yes.
And what it sounds like is that, from what I'm hearing from members of the audience is that although our intent is to, our intent is to use this for the right purposes and not punish medical marijuana users.
Absolutely.
It sounds like maybe some are being punished that are using it for the right intent, maybe, maybe, and that's what's happening. Is that what I'm getting from everyone here?
And not in my experience.
Can we have a vote, please? Councilmember Leaks May?
No.
Councilmember Martin?
Yes.
Councilmember Polka?
Yes.
I'm, sorry, I got confused. The no, yes, yes, no thing. Give me a minute. It's yes.
And I'm a no. So that passes to reconsider?
She voted yes.
Did you?
I voted no.
So it does pass.
All right. Next on the agenda is call to council, and I believe the first up on the, who does he go in order with? I think we'll just start with you, Chief.
Nothing further, thank you.
Deputy, or DPW Director, Mr. Lloyd Kuratin? Thank you. Fire Chief?
Nothing.
Excellent, thank you. Justin Lyons from the Planning Department?
Alex.
Mark Howell, Building?
Yes.
Really? Seriously?
Yeah.
What's going on? Kara from the Communications. Excellent, come on up.
Mayor Protem Piana. I have something I'm actually really jazzed to present about tonight. I would like to introduce a new intern that we have. You all know that in the year and a half since we have started this communications department, AKA me, that we have been incredibly busy, and the demands continue to grow. We hear from residents all the time that they hear us, or they see us out there more, and, you know, they, we're more visible. That's awesome. For everything they see, though, there's a lot of things that happen behind the scenes, a lot of projects, a lot of media requests, lot of stories to tell, too many almost, which is a great problem to have. So we decided to start looking for a little bit of intern help. So I'm going to introduce here Aaron Davis. He actually was referred to us by Chief Collins. When we first talked at the end of his last semester, he was a senior at Alma with designs to go into a career as a PIO, and he had done some really cool internship work with FEMA, learning all about kind of crisis communications, and that's where his interests lie. So we were delighted to bring him on board. He's been with us for a few weeks now, and he's kind of getting into the swing of things, assisting with newsletter content for the upcoming newsletter, assisting with crafting press releases, and starting to do some of that work, as well as helping us with some of our flyers, brochures, things like that, that have really essential information in print for residents, but they're very, very, very old, and they desperately need to be modernized. So I'm just gonna let him step on up here and say hello.
Hello, I just wanted to say thank you for the opportunity. I've been enjoying it so far, and it's tight as the line of, it's the career field that I want to end up getting involved in, so I'm enjoying it.
Well, welcome, and thank you. We hope your experience here is a good one.
If I may, to the chair, what are your plans after Alma?
I'm done now, so, right now.
Permanent employment.
Yeah.
God bless.
I like any type of communication along the lines of, I would like to specifically go into crisis communication, or like Kara said, PIO, Public Information Officer, almost anything. I just love communication, so we'll see where it goes from there.
He's got a, he's very savvy, he's definitely in the right, right field, and we're lucky we nabbed him for his final internship.
Great.
Well, welcome.
Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, Kara. Finance Director, anything from you? Joe, Assistant City Manager?
Nothing.
April?
Nothing.
I got Lloyd. Oh, Marnie. Oh, do you have anything coming up?
I think Marnie has something.
We have a little election coming up next week. So I'd like to remind everyone to please get out and vote on August 2nd. Polls will be open from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. It is the primary election to narrow the field of candidates for the November ballot, and there are also two local proposals and one county proposal. Absentee ballots are available, and we are required by law to be open on Saturday prior to the election, so we will be in the office Saturday, July 30th, from 9:00 to 2:00 p.m. As last chance to come in and pick up a ballot to take home. You can also vote by absentee the Monday prior to the election until 4 o'clock here at City Hall, not able to take the ballot out. I would encourage everyone to go to the Michigan Voter Information Center to see their sample ballot. If you have requested an absentee ballot, you can also find out there when it was sent and received by the city, which is kind of cool. And although I believe we are set for election inspectors for August, we are still expecting, accepting precinct inspector applications for the big upcoming presidential election in November. Thank you.
Did you say that we're set? That's so great. We have a full?
We are very hopeful that they all show up.
And I think I might have told someone some wrong information, so the day of the election, they cannot bring their absentee ballots here?
They can return their absentee ballots here to City Hall until 8:00 p.m. on election night. So they will be counted. Anything that we receive at, after 8:00 p.m. will be cut off, but anything before that, we have two absentee counting boards here in City Hall processing them all day.
Okay.
Thank you. And Mr. Chris, anything from?
Nothing, Mayor Protem, thank you.
Excellent. I'm going the opposite direction this time.
I have nothing.
Because I can.
I have nothing.
Councilwoman Polka?
I have nothing.
All right. Councilman Leaks May?
Nothing tonight.
Councilwoman, I just called you.
I know, I know.
I'm sorry. Councilwoman Martin?
Pardon me?
Sorry. I did that.
Well, now I want to revoke my first comment, which I would like to compliment the Mayor Protem on running her first meeting tonight. I thought you did a.
Thank you.
Up until the last 30 seconds, a fine job. Secondly, I just want to mimic what Crystal said earlier. It is so easy to get discouraged this election season, to just drop out and not participate. Please, please, please vote. There's some very important issues on the ballot next Tuesday, so don't get so discouraged you don't participate. And then lastly, for future discussion, my congratulations to Pig and Whiskey, by all accounts was a great festival. I think it did illustrate some holes in our residential parking program that I'd like to take a step back and look at, and at further opportunities. While generally getting really great reviews from folks, I think the festival of that size has presented some opportunities for us, and before Dream Cruise hits, we should have a conversation about how to maybe plug some of those. That's it.
And for me, I just wanted to sort of acknowledge the importance of one of the grant recipients today, even though I was part of it, the Dale's Neighborhood Group, the importance of neighbors taking responsibility to start a block club or a neighborhood group. They won a grant from the Ferndale Community Foundation from organizing four years ago, and something that I've been a part of as a Dale's neighborhood and person. And I just wanted to give a shout out to the residents who helped get this group off the ground, and that is Everett Kaiser, who's been sort of our de facto president. I'm just gonna shout out for myself, helped co-found it early on with the support of Everett. But really, who's doing the work behind the scenes are your neighbors. And it's Everett, it's Lynn McPherson, it's Phil Riviera, it's Ginger Keaton, and Janet Lawless. And all the events that put on in the last four years, they've paid for it out of pocket. And so, so we've all spent our own money to bring together this group and make sure that our neighbors get to know one another. And I know through the Master Land Use Plan, it came out that there is a need for more block groups and more neighborhood groups, and that they're forming organically, and I just wanted to say that the importance of neighborhood leadership and the residents stepping up is what really gets these going and sustains them. So I just want to shout out to everybody who is a part of one and is trying to get one started in Ferndale. I also wanted to just sort of call out what our Commissioner Helene Zach talked about with the RTA. We're at a pivotal moment in another chapter of Transit Drama, episode 86, year 55, is that we're near, close to getting something on the ballot for November, and just please contact your county executive and say how important it is that we have regional transit to support getting people to their jobs, and our elderly and disabled can get where they need to go. So if you could do that in the next few days, that would be fantastic. And then I just wanted to shout out to our new CEO, Community Engagement Officer of our police department, and the police department handing out water to our visitors and pedestrians and residents on what has been called the Ring of Fire of Heat Days. And so it's been pretty brutal out there, and I just appreciate the special care and compassion to make sure people stay hydrated. And that is all. And we're ending this meeting at 9:48. Good night. Have a good one.
Now, it's a little hot in there.